Please join me in the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, visible, liberty, and justice. Mr. Tosti, would you please call roll?
Ms. Strauss.
Here.
Ms. Purple.
Here.
Mr. Kiesak.
Here.
Ms. Payne.
Here.
We also have our solicitor, our township manager, our township engineers, and some department heads.
Thank you. This meeting, as I mentioned, is being conducted virtually. It's being broadcast on our cable channel. That's Verizon Channel 30 and Comcast Channel 22. It's also being live streamed through our website, www.middletownbucks.org, and live streamed on our YouTube channel at Middletown. Members of the public will have an opportunity to provide comment both on each agenda item and during the public comments section at the end of the meeting. That can be done several different ways. One is by email at info@middletownbucks.org, by text message at 215-995-1249, and also by calling at 1-929-205-6099. Meeting ID for that call is 809-593-608, followed by the pound key. A few announcements. The next Board of Supervisors meeting will be Monday, May 4th, 2020, at 7:00 PM, and Mr. Esposito also has an announcement.
Okay, I just want to announce that the Board of Supervisors did hold three executive sessions, one on March 20th, one on March 28th, and one on April 20th.
Soliciting the amount of $1,310,769.10. Item B, consideration of approving the March 2nd, 2020 minutes of public meeting of the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors, and the March 23rd, 2020 minutes of the emergency meeting of the Middletown Township Supervisors. And item C, consideration of approving agreement with CSX for the Woodburn Road Quiet Zone.
To accept the consent.
Carefully to give people time to ask questions if they have any. Seeing none, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Pass is 5-0. Next on the agenda is consideration of the minor subdivision plan located at.
Hawthorne Avenue is located in the R2 zoning district. The applicant proposes to subdivide the existing lot into two lots and construct a single-family home on the new lot, identified as Lot Number Two. There's currently an existing structure there, a garage, which results in the total development of that lot, if you will, to actually have a decrease in total impervious. I'll review just the zoning variances that were issued in 2015. This plan actually is a bit of an older one. These zoning variances granted were to allow Lot One to be 8,650 square feet and Lot Two to be 7,047 square feet, which is under the 10,000 square foot required. The second variance was to allow an impervious surface ratio of 34% for Lot One, which is over the 30% maximum allowed. The third is to allow a conforming lot to be subdivided into two non-conforming lots. And the fourth is to allow a building envelope of 3,089 square feet for Lot One and Two, 168 square feet for Lot Two, and 3,500 square feet is required. So those are the zoning variances that were issued in 2015. The applicant does request two waivers. One is to not provide sidewalks along North Hawthorne Avenue. The second is not to provide curbs related to those sidewalks, and in that area on Hawthorne, there's no curbs in that area of the township. It was reviewed by the Middletown Planning Commission at their August 3rd, 2016 meeting, at which point it received the recommendation for approval and brought, when it would be brought before this board. Also, they agreed that a payment of a fee in lieu of not providing the curbs and sidewalks associated with their waivers would be agreeable. At this point, I'd like to turn it to the applicant, if they're present, and have them speak further to their request tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Kessler. Is someone here on behalf of the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, if the applicant's not present, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have at this time.
I believe we are in the process of getting the applicant in to the meeting. Just give me one second, but thank you. Everyone can just hold on one minute. I'm told they are being brought in. Okay, I believe we have somebody here on behalf of the applicant or the applicant.
On Tom Brennan on the applicant.
Okay. Go ahead. The floor is yours to tell the board about this proposal.
Is John one yet, the engineer?
The applicant's engineer, I don't believe, as mentioned, they were present. I will mention that we spoke with John, the applicant's engineer, at the end of last week, just regarding our review letter, which was dated of August 2019. The remaining comments of that letter were related to agency approvals, so the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority, as well as PICO. And they had stated that they had received two of those approvals out of the three that were mentioned, with the last one pending, and agreed you know, at this date, pending those final approvals being received.
I'm told, thank you. I'm told that the engineer, John, is here. He just needs to unmute himself, so he can.
Yeah, I did that. You should be able to hear me now.
We can hear you now. Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that.
Okay, go ahead. Floor is yours.
Basically, this is an application that's been on the books for a couple of years now. The holdup was facilities planning module we had to get, which took some time to get that put together and done. There was a review letter from, I believe it was somewhere around 2015, when this was first before the board. Since then, all the engineering comments have been addressed. The latest review letter, there's only a few few items that they still need to be done. And basically, they're just getting a couple of approvals. The plan is fine. Item number one, the applicant shall provide prevailing wage costs. For the two requested waivers, that's waivers were for concrete and sidewalk in front of the subdivision. Item number eight, provide approval from Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority for public water connection. I'm not exactly sure where that stands. I have an application from them that needs to be filled out and executed, and I think that's all we need to do, within a copy of that application. Item number nine, approval from PIDEP for a sewage planning module exemption. The exemption was denied, and we went through a full planning module, which was approved, and I think you approved that at a meeting one or two months ago. And then I think after the township approves it, it has to be items are in the planning module, which you should have a copy of. The item number 18, provide this office with copies of all outstanding agency approvals. I sent over everything I had to Isaac last week. The only approval I think we may need to get in addition is the Bucks County Conservation District. Their approval was for a plan prior to this latest revision, so we have to get an updated approval letter.
You were on mute, Mike.
Sorry.
No problem.
Moving on to board questions. Ms. Strauss.
I was just going to make a motion if you cared to accept one.
Yeah, let me just ask. Mr. Kessler, I know you provided a lot of details. Or anything else you want to add before we move to a motion?
Nothing further added this time.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Strauss.
I make a motion to grant final minor subdivision and land development approval for 131 North Hawthorne Avenue, SLD number 16-4, with the following conditions. Number one, applicant shall comply in full with all requirements of the Middletown Township subdivision and land development ordinance and the Middletown Township zoning ordinance unless relief was granted by the body having jurisdiction. Number two, confirmatory deeds shall be recorded at the time of plan recreation, confirming the new legal descriptions for Lots One and Two. The deeds shall be in a form acceptable to the township solicitor prior to reporting with the Bucks County reporter of deeds.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mike.
Okay, we have a second from Mr. Tosti. Are there any board questions? Seeing none, are there any questions from the public? Seeing no questions from the public, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The pass is 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
John, can you give me a call?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just gonna wait one second while we get the applicant moved out. Okay, the next item on the agenda is consideration of enacting ordinance number 20-02, providing for a stop sign eastbound at the intersection of Four Leaf Road and Fort Cynthia Drive. This was the first change would be to create a one-way stop sign going eastbound on Four Leaf Road at the intersection of Fort Cynthia Drive East. This originated from a resident's concern about that intersection with cars coming on and off and the visibility of vehicles. The stop sign would reinforce the right of way at the intersection and create consistency with other intersections along that road. The second change is a proposed no creation of a no parking zone on eastward go 102 feet from the stop bar at Old Lincoln Highway. This is, this came from residents, multiple residents expressing concerns that vehicles parked in that area, even though they were beyond the state limit, the state minimum distance from the stop sign, was still causing visibility issues with the sharp angle that the road intersects Old Lincoln Highway. The recommended distance comes from our traffic engineers at Traffic Planning and Design. Both of these items were talked about and discussed thoroughly at a Citizens Traffic Commission meeting. The residents of Ravine Avenue, some of them were in attendance at one of those meetings and provided input. Both these items were approved by the Traffic Commission for me to bring to you as a recommendation. The police department and professional staff also agree. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Thank you, Mr. Sodaski. Are there any questions from the board? Yes, Mr. Tosti.
I'll move to an act ordinance number 20-02, providing for a stop sign eastbound at the intersection of Four Leaf Road and Fort Cynthia Drive East, and prohibit parking for 102 feet on East Ravine Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Sodaski. Thank you, Ms. Payne. There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions? Are there any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sodaski.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is consideration of awarding the 2020-21 Consortium Road Material Supplies Contract to Eureka Stone Quarry, Shawfond, Pennsylvania, in an amount not to exceed $57,000. Mr. Gartenmeyer.
Good evening, board members. Tonight, we ask your approval for road material bids for supply materials. Every year, we file the estimated form for the material that we'll use for the 2020 and 2021 year. This is done through the Bucks County Consortium bid, to get the best pricing, and this year, the bid was, came in with Eureka Stone Quarry being the lowest bidder.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Gartenmeyer?
I would just like to say to Mr. Gartenmeyer, thank you for all you guys are doing out there during this pandemic. I mean, you're out there on skeleton crews, and you're getting things done, and it's really appreciated on my part.
Thank you.
Any others? Ms. Strauss.
Nope, just ready for the motion if you, if people were done.
I see no other questions. Go ahead.
I move to award the 2020 to 2021 Road Materials Supplies Contract to Eureka Stone Quarry, Shawfond PA, in an amount not to exceed $57,000.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions? Are there any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass is 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Gartenmeyer.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, consideration of resolution number 20-14R, extending the due date for Middletown Township real estate taxes face period from July 1st, 2020 to July 30th, 2020. Ms. Tealie Coles, do you just want to provide some quick background on what the county has already done on this issue?
Sure, absolutely. So Bucks County, the Board of Commissioners recently extended the face period from July 1st to July 30th. And so for county taxes, the first day of the penalty period will be July 31st. And so in order to be in line with the county taxes, which by the way, are billed on the same, in the same mailing, that most townships in Bucks County are, are just dovetailing in and doing what the county has done, to give residents an extra month of face period before the penalty period.
So essentially, we're giving residents an extra month on the face period and bringing our tax collection in line with the way the county taxes are already going to be collected.
Correct.
Are there any?
Sorry, Mike. Just as a clarification, this does not extend the discount period at all. The discount period still ends at the end of it.
Thank you. Are there any questions from either, or either Ms. Tealie Coles or Mr. Esposito? In that case, is there a motion? Ms. Strauss.
I move to, are we move, excuse me, Mr. Esposito, are we moving to enact this resolution or advertise this resolution tonight?
Enact.
Okay. I move to enact this resolution, 20-14R, extending the due date for Middletown Township real estate taxes face period from July 1st, 2020 to July 30th, 2020.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Tosti. There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions at this time?
I would just.
Oh, sorry.
Thank Mr. Esposito for clarifying the discount, because that is up on April 30th of this month.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the public on this issue? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Pass is 5-0. Thank you. Next on the agenda is consideration of accepting the resignation of Michael McCann from his position on the zoning hearing board. There are motions.
I'll make a motion to accept Mr. McCann's resignation from the zoning board.
I'll second. Sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions?
I would just like to make a comment and thank Mr. McCann for the service to his township.
I'll echo that sentiment. Any other questions? Are there any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Pass is 5-0. Next on the agenda is consideration of resolution number 20-15R, authorizing execution of a stipulation to settle zoning hearing board appeal of KTMT Stone, allowing Jeff Miller, Linda Mead, Carla Jones, and Save Stone Meadows Farm to intervene in land development appeal of KTMT and setting zoning hearing board appeal. Mr. Esposito.
As the agenda item states, I'm asking that the board authorize me to execute the stipulation that would settle the zoning hearing board appeal of KTMT Stone regarding the Stone Farm development. There's two aspects to this stipulation. First one is it would actually settle the zoning hearing board appeal, grant the variance that the developer requested, but then also, at the same time, it would allow Jeff Miller, Linda Mead, Carla Jones, and the Save Stone Farm Meadows group to intervene and participate in the land development appeal related to Stone Farm. I have spoken with the attorneys for all our parties involved, including the attorney for Jeff Miller, Linda Mead, and Save Stone Farm Group, and they've already approved of this stipulation. Just as clarification for everybody, there are two litigation appeals that the township is involved with, with KTMT Stone regarding the Stone Farm. The first one that everyone automatically thinks of is the land development application of the developer to build 121 homes at the farm. The second one is related to the zoning hearing board appeal that this is, that this stipulation will settle. That zoning hearing board appeal was related to a variance request in June of 2019 that would permit the developer to construct road improvements along Tollgate Road that were in the floodplain. The zoning hearing board denied it at the time. The developer appealed. We joined in on the appeal to participate. Jeff Miller and Linda Mead also in the zoning hearing board appeal, and it's been kind of ongoing since then. All parties discussed it with the judge, and this, this stipulation was, was discussed between all of the parties. So essentially, this would end the zoning hearing board appeal, allow Jeff Miller and the Save Stone Farm group to join in, in the land development appeal, which is probably the case that more people care about, and it would, everybody can now concentrate just on the land development appeal.
And just to be clear on that last point, so the, the approval of this stipulation, other than allowing Ms. Mead, Mr. Miller, and their group to intervene and join in the action, does not impact the land development appeal in any way, correct?
It does not impact the appeal. It would impact if the property was ever developed, how the road improvements would be done along Tollgate Road. That's what it would impact.
And from a legal standpoint, these are two separate actions, correct?
Yes, related to the same property, but yes.
Are there any other board questions for Mr. Esposito on this issue? Okay, I will make a motion to enact resolution number 20-15R, authorizing execution of a stipulation to settle zoning hearing board appeal of KTMT Stone, allowing Jeff Miller, Linda Mead, Carla Jones, and Save Stone Meadow Farms to intervene in land development appeal of KTMT and setting zoning hearing board appeal. There are seconds.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions? Mr. Tosti.
No, I was just on mute. Sorry.
Sorry, I thought I saw your hand up. Are there any questions from the public? And real quick, as we're going to public questions, I'm seeing a note here that the meeting ID that I read off at the beginning of the meeting, for people who want to call in using that 1-979-205-6099 number, there's a different meeting ID than the one we had originally. The meeting ID now is 681-272-494, followed by the pound sign. If you're going to call in with a question or a comment using that phone number, please note the corrected meeting ID. With that, I don't see any questions or comments from the public. There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Pass is 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Esposito. Next on the agenda, we are going to have an update from our emergency management department, and for that, we have our fire marshal and director of emergency management, Jim McGuire.
Good evening, board. So I wanted to first explain a little bit of the duties of the Office of Emergency Management, and kind of how we prepared before we knew what was coming. So the basic job of emergency management is to coordinate the services, do preparation work, develop plans for potential scenarios that could happen, whether it's weather-related, natural disaster, or even for pandemic. So once we have all those written out, then once something happens, it's basically like a playbook that we go down through and make sure that we're hitting all the key tasks within the emergency operations plan. We also do training on it. Each year, we do some kind of exercise where we bring in organizations that would actually work together during a declaration of emergency or a disaster, and we run an exercise, making sure that everybody's hitting the key topics and things that should get done during the event. Then we would run an after-action report and update the emergency operations plan for best-case scenarios. So how do we get to a preparation stage for this pandemic that is currently occurring? So in late December, we began to start tracking and watching things that were going on overseas. So the first thing that caught our attention was that we saw countries quarantining their citizens, which isn't a normal task, and it's a fairly big undertaking. We thought that that was odd. Then they started building hospitals, the quarantines grew larger, and we really started to pay attention to those different tasks and options that they were taking. We started to initiate discussions with different emergency service organizations within the township, started talking with the township manager about different potential. Uh, we started to initiate discussions with, uh, different emergency service organizations within the township, uh, started talking with the township manager, um, about different potential scenarios that were going to and could potentially occur within the United States and the township. We started to pull supplies together, um, and started a dialogue with our emergency responders, and then we put in our first, uh, personal protective equipment order requests in very early February when it looked like the spread was starting to really come out of the country of origin and spread to places that were not on the borders of that particular country. So what are we doing now? We changed our staffing hours to work seven days a week, twelve hours a day, um, and we created two independent crews. So one of the things very early on that we were very concerned about was continuity of operations and if, um, a certain portion of the staff were to get sick, how would the emergency functions within emergency management still work? So we also started daily briefings with all the emergency response agencies. Um, currently we have a call-in process similar to what's here, and all the emergency response organizations, including the hospital, uh, can get on that phone call, and we do a round robin where we see if anybody has any needs. We give them current updates to where the status of things are and what projections we actually are looking at. We also have some planning assumptions that we put out, um, very early on in the process, and they're about two pages long of things that we really need to be keeping an eye on and how we would deal with that if those things start to happen. One of the big pieces of having a daily briefing is sharing, uh, information as well as the different logistical concerns. Who's got equipment? Where we can get different equipment from? Obviously, the team concept to an emergency where you bring the key leaders within different organizations together. They all have different ideas, different mentalities, and different resource abilities. So having seven or eight people sitting at a, a computer and talking each day, we're able to find different things within the community that one person would not be able to do by themselves. We're also coordinating right now all the decontamination of the ambulances during the daytime, uh, for our local rescue squad, and we've been asked to assist some of the other patients up within Middletown Township and transported them to, uh, Saint Mary's or, uh, Jefferson Buck. So one of the key things that we're very concerned about as part of this process is having enough ambulances on the street and getting them back in service as quick as we possibly can. For an ambulance crew to go in and decon an ambulance, it takes between forty-five minutes to an hour. With the process that we developed where we send the daytime, uh, fire engine out to assist, it's dropped that time at least by half, um, if not in a quarter, um, or three quarters, um, where it's taken between fifteen and twenty minutes. So that's actually huge getting the, the ambulances back on the street. So our team is also coordinating a lot of other events, um, in relation to this pandemic. So every week we run at least two tabletop exercises to develop contingency plans, how we're going to function if certain triggers occur. Uh, we're coordinating with the county, uh, with the schools when they were still in service, and we make that phone call to the schools, uh, still once a week because they do have, um, very, uh, big pieces within the community where, uh, they're actually providing food out. Um, so making sure that they have the equipment that they need to keep themselves safe and the, the citizens safe. We're coordinating, we have daily calls with any of the healthcare facilities that have positive patients within the facilities. And then we have a weekly call where all of our healthcare facilities are able to dial in to find out again where the township is and different planning perspectives that we have going on there. One of the big places that we're very concerned about is the vulnerable populations. Uh, the older citizens within the community as well as the ones in the nursing homes. So that's really been a big target, uh, that we've been talking to, pushing out information for, and that is taking up a pretty good amount of time. So I have Ellen Welsh here with me, who has been the deputy emergency manager for this incident, and he is taking on that big piece of healthcare, making sure that all those services are coordinated, talking with them daily and working them through any needs that they may have. So we're also providing support for other places, other businesses within the township that need it. We're going out to the grocery stores, making sure that they have the PPE that they need, talking with the, the pharmacies, making sure again that they have the same things, that they're not seeing any kind of logistical issues with their supply chain. Making sure that the funeral homes are prepared for the potentials of what are coming and making sure that things are going to go well from that perspective. We've also helped coordinate some of the testing sites within Middletown Township, as well as getting county equipment in to help, uh, one of the testing sites that was at Saint Mary's where we had gotten some tent, drive-through tents, uh, from. We're very, very fortunate that Middletown Township has a very good emergency services team and that the individuals that are participating in the meetings, um, are very up to date and come with a lot of information. It's one of the reasons that I think that Middletown is ahead of a lot of the surrounding municipalities because everybody's really putting their head together and it is a very big team process. Um, one of the things that we were able to secure today was we got four, oh, a little over four hundred gallons of a product called MediClean from Cityline Construction. And that doesn't sound like a fairly big task, but trying to get all the data to them that they need to make sure that we get enough for what we're doing. Then we get it delivered out, get it picked up. Uh, Public Works has been a huge part of the process. Picking up and delivering things out, really taking a, a very big handle on, uh, a lot of the logistical items that need to get picked up or pushed out into the community, whoever that may be. They, and I will end up with my part, and then I'll take any questions. The Board of Supervisors has been great as far as leadership and direction and any support that the emergency services has needed. Um, the stuff that we're asking for, um, we're getting that moved through very quickly so we can get that stuff on the street, and I just want to thank you. So with that, I'll take any questions that the board may have.
Um, thank you, Mr. McGuire, um, both for the update and also for everything that you and your team, um, are doing and have been doing throughout this pandemic. Um, one, one thing is, is certain, um, you and your team were out ahead of this. Saw it coming, um, you prepared, um, and you've, um, you created a plan and you've, you've implemented that plan, and it's allowed us to really manage this crisis a very effective way. So thank you for everything that you've done and continue to do. Um, there are some questions, um, from the public, but before we get to those, to any, uh, other members of the board, any questions for Mr. McGuire?
I don't have a question. Oh, I'm sorry.
I would just echo what Mike said, Jim. Um, you guys are doing a fantastic job, and then I'll turn it over to Dawn, but I just want to echo exactly what Mr. Dees said.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Sorry about that. I just wanted to, again, echo what Mike and Tom had said. Um, we appreciate all your hard efforts in, uh, keeping our community safe. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to, you know, obviously, um, you know, you guys are doing a super great job and Public Works, um, as somebody who is immunocompromised, it, it really, um, it's really important to make sure we look out for each other, and I'm really, really proud to work, um, with you guys and working in a township that cares so much about its community and was prepared and ready to handle, um, the situation we're in now. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, thank you. So, um, let me, uh, turn to questions from the public. Um, and real quickly, before I do that, I've been asked to one more time give out this phone number, um, in case anybody wants to call in using that nine, two, nine in line. So that phone number again is one, nine, two, nine, two, zero, five, six, zero, nine, 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 two, nine, two, zero, five, six, zero, nine, nine. And the meeting ID again, and this is different than the meeting ID that we initially had on the agenda and that I gave out at the beginning of the meeting, it's six, eight, one, two, seven, two, four, nine, four, followed by the pound sign. Six, eight, one, two, seven, two, four, nine, four, pound. Um, okay, uh, give me one second here. Um, question, Jim, for you. This is from, uh, Mark Lewis of Golf Club Drive in Langhorne. Um, first question, do you know the status of the township's emergency squad and fire department services? Have the services been impacted due to coronavirus from lack of staff or volunteers, and how are they doing with personal protective?
So we're actually doing very well from a staffing perspective. Um, so we have not, currently, the way it stands right now, um, had people impacted specifically from the virus that I know of. Um, everybody is still responding to calls. The ambulance is staffing the same number of trucks that they were staffing before the event started, and the fire departments are the same way. Um, we were just able to secure, um, N ninety-five masks last week to get everybody their own personal set of N ninety-five masks. And one of the things that we've done to enhance the PPE that we have now is that we were actually able to secure the supplies to build our own UV sterilization systems. So we actually gave one to every fire department. We gave one to each of the rescue squad stations. There was one given to the police department, and we put a large box up at Saint Mary's Hospital in the emergency room for all the EMS responders as well as the staff there. Um, they're able to come and at the end or beginning of their shift, um, go through and put their masks, their phones, different items inside the box, um, in order to get that sterilized, and that process takes about ten minutes.
Thank you, and I, and I want to make sure the members of the public do understand this point because it is important that the rescue squads, the volunteer fire departments, the fire marshal's office, the office of emergency management, and certainly the police department are still uprunning operational and providing full service to all of our residents throughout the township. There's been absolutely no change or drop-off in any of those services, and to Jim's credit critically, we now have N ninety-five masks for everybody. In addition, we have a way to sterilize those masks. So, um, it's really incredible. So, um, here in Middletown Township, I obviously can't speak to other communities, but we are, at least from an emergency services standpoint, um, operating business as usual. So everybody in the township, um, can, can, can know that, even though other things obviously have changed. Uh, there's another question also from, um, Mr. Lewis for you, uh, Mr. McGuire. Um, and I'll read it. For the last two days, the Bucks County Courier-Times has had front-page stories criticizing the Bucks County Health Department for not being transparent and not releasing information on positive coronavirus infection rates and info on deceased individuals at long-term care facilities while other counties are sharing that information with the public. Has the county health department been sharing that information with Middletown Township? Are there any significant outbreaks in assisted living facilities in Middletown? And would the township be willing to make that information public for the sake of those who have relatives or friends living in those facilities?
So the county did start to release the skilled nursing homes that are having issues with COVID patients inside the facility. So that just started, I believe it was on Friday of this week, um, and we were told of a few facilities that, um, have one or two patients inside, and that was the last communications that we had gotten from the county as far as that is concerned. Um, so the information needs to get released from the Bucks County Health Department. When they give the information to us, they tell us that we are not allowed to release that information. So the county health department has that, that piece, um, as far as getting it out to the community.
Okay, um, I do not see any other, um, public questions or comments for Mr. McGuire. Do any other members of the board have any other questions at this time? Thank you again, Mr. McGuire.
Thank you.
Um, next on the agenda, um, following in line with, um, information about our COVID nineteen response and effort here in the township, uh, we're going to have an update, um, from Nick Balla, who's going to, um, provide some information about our COVID nineteen public information efforts. Mr. Ball.
Uh, so we have been spending the last week putting together some information on, uh, MiddletownBucks.org. So we've created a, uh, COVID nineteen resource and information portal. So if you go to the website, you click the big picture in the background, or if you go, um, down a little bit, it's the first thing on the menu. Uh, we have resources for businesses, individuals, um, alerts, facility updates, um, as far as the township's, uh, response, park updates, um, pretty much anything under the moon and stars, uh, for people who are looking for business resources. Uh, we have information about local food cantries, uh, information about taxes, a lot of those kind of key events coming up. And so it's kind of a one-stop shop for information, uh, for anyone who is looking for some updates, uh, in Middletown.
Thank you, and I, and I just want to say, I mean, if anybody hasn't had a chance to go and look at the website, there's a lot of information and resources there. Um, it's really incredible and, um, over and above, I think, what most communities are doing in terms of COVID nineteen outreach. Um, and so if members of the public have questions or looking for resources, that's a great first place to start. Um, in addition, all of us are always available, um, talk to residents and answer any questions we can. I want to thank you, Mr. Ball, for bringing that together.
Absolutely, and if I could add, um, anyone who wants to contribute to that, if you have anything we should add, uh, just give someone on here, my, my email address is at the bottom of the primary page, and we'll be happy to add that.
Thank you. Do any other, uh, members of the board have any questions for Mr. Ball?
I, I was just wondering, on that site, is there anything, uh, like resources for any of the township residents who are unemployed, uh, because of this, on how to collect unemployment, uh, especially now too with self-employed and gig workers, they can now collect unemployment, um, under the new, the new stimulus act? And that, that, that hasn't actually started yet. It's going to start in about two weeks, but is that kind of information on there too to help our residents with the unemployment, especially the ones who are in their own business and, and things like that?
Uh, we have included some links to apply for unemployment. I know the state has made some announcements. There's some, uh, delays in that process. Um, and we have included a few items for that, and I can make sure that we add some more. We have also put together, uh, we found an article from, um, a major newspaper that goes through in-depth about the, uh, federal stimulus package. It'll be going out soon, and so that's a, another reputable resource, but we can make sure that we, uh, fill in any gaps that we have when it comes to job resources.
Yeah, any, any kind of that information too, um, Mr. Ball, maybe we can lead them to their state rapport or state senator because they are state issues, and at least they can have the resources there. because they are state issues and at least they can have the resources there because there is a delay in the unemployment. I've had a lot of people contact me about pin numbers and they're not getting the pin numbers. Uh, but the big thing is the unemployment or the, um, self-employed workers who normally don't get unemployment. And this with the stimulus package, they are eligible for it. Uh, but they have to coordinate it with the states and the government in order to get that whole package together. And from my understanding, within the next two weeks, that'll be available to them. So they can actually contact their state rep or their state senator for more information on that.
Great. We'll make sure we add that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Tosti. Any other, uh, board members have any questions or comments for Mr. Balla? Thank you, Mr. Balla. And I don't see any, uh, public comments or questions for you either. Appreciate it. It's not on the agenda, um, but I thought, uh, if, um, he doesn't mind, I would ask our chief of police, um, Chief Barterella to just speak very quickly. Just for a minute, we've had a lot of members of the public who have reached out, um, primarily out of concern for the police officers and how the department is doing. Um, and so I, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but if you wouldn't mind just giving the community a quick update on, um, how things are going in your department.
Spot, Mr. Kizak. Can everybody can hear me? Yeah, so obviously we were, um, as far as Bucks County goes and probably in, in the region, uh, one of the most affected departments with having nine positive cases within the PD, but I was talking to someone from the media today who wanted an update. I, I told him, I think we finally turned the corners. We got three of our nine back. So really we're only down six right now and probably three more will be back within the week. So it looks like we're, we're finally making progress. I mean, if it's, if it's taught us anything, it's kind of shown us, uh, how to recognize signs that you're infected. It's taught us a lot about the virus that we probably wouldn't have known. We didn't have nine positive officers. And the other thing I think it did is it, it gave us more awareness of how to protect ourselves, keep us safe. And also just different measures to take as a police department. And one of the things that we were really concerned about, uh, when we had all the positive cases, uh, we were confident from, from seeing the officers like first five or six that their symptoms were fairly mild. Uh, my concern was I just, I didn't want officers that were asymptomatic going into the community and possibly spreading it there. That's why we did the quarantining that we did. That's why we took the measures that we did. A lot of it was to protect the community and other officers from becoming infected. Was a little bit against, uh, some of the recommendations we received, but I think in the end it helped our department avoid a lot more infections. And now we appear to be turning the corner. So as far as our operations go, I mean, it affected us a little bit, but we did some, uh, creative scheduling and we haven't been compromised at all as far as patrol goes. We had to have some detectives do some patrol shifts, things like that shift our priorities quite a bit. Uh, we were down nine officers, but it hasn't affected, um, our patrol at all. It hasn't affected our staffing at all as far as street patrol goes. So as far as our coverage of the community, that's still just as good as it was before this health crisis. Uh, as far as what we're doing, obviously with everything shut down, things have changed a little bit. So during the day, we try to do is focus our attention on those areas that have those, uh, you know, life sustaining businesses where the supermarkets are, the banks are, and the businesses that are operating. We try to maintain a very strong presence in our park just to encourage large gatherings, keep that social distancing, um, stop any issues that are going on there. And then at nighttime for all of our businesses that have been closed, uh, we're doing a lot of business checks just to make sure that they're safe. There's a lot of businesses that haven't been open now in several weeks. We just want to make sure that those businesses are free of being vandalized or broken into. The other thing that our officers are doing a really good job of is just being visible in the community. Driving through all of our residential developments, um, just to have a very strong visible presence, just to make sure our community knows we're out there and that they feel safe. I mean, those are some of the measures that we're taking. As far as call volume goes, I wouldn't say it's decreased. It's changed, obviously. We're, we're doing as much as we can by phone. That's to just avoid as much contact with the public as possible. Uh, but in, in, in policing, you, you can't avoid public contact. You're going to have it. And unfortunately, you're going to have close contacts sometimes without PD just because that's the nature of the job that we do. The officers have been very good at handling that. Uh, and I think that the public has been understanding of the, the protective measures that we've taken, not just for us, but for them as well. The other thing that we haven't stopped though, is when you need an officer in person, you're getting an officer in person. We haven't stopped that. You, you just can't stop that in policing. There are just some calls that you can't respond to over the phone or online. So we do want to make sure that the public knows. And I know that's true for every police department across Bucks County. When you have to see an officer in person, you're seeing an officer in person to handle your issue. So, uh, with that, if the board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Chief. Um, you, you know, you're, you and your whole department are doing an incredible job dealing with this crisis. And certainly we're really glad to hear that you've got officers back, uh, that are recovering and getting back to work. Um, that's, um, really great to hear. It does sound like perhaps the corner has been turned. Um, are there any, uh, questions from any of the board members for the chief?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to thank the chief and the officers for their work and their hard work during this, uh, crisis. And I think they're doing a great job.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
If I'd have known, if I'd have known I was going to be on video, Ryan Morrison, the, the now TV infamous Ryan Morrison is back on duty tonight. I would have had him behind me like Jim had his deputy, uh, emergency manager behind him. Ryan was actually in my office tonight. This is his first night back. So he looks good. He feels really good and he's ready to get back to work. So good for him.
I, I will echo them and say thank you, but, uh, I just want to know, does anybody really want to go near Ryan?
Well, it was funny when he was walking in, everybody scattered, but now he came upstairs. Uh, he, he feels really good. Uh, he recovered. He's just about a hundred percent. So, um, I know, I know this really knocks you down for a while and wears you out a little bit, but, you know, he's young, so he rebounded really well.
Good.
Yeah. So, and we also have, uh, another officer who returned tonight as well. So.
Good. Good to hear. Thanks.
Appreciate it.
I just wanted, oh, sorry. I just wanted to, um, echo that you guys are doing a great job. I know this is not, um, an easy situation. It's very stressful, uh, for everybody. But, um, I know that I've seen you guys doing birthday parades, uh, for kids in the community. And that really, people are sharing it on Facebook all over the place. It really brightens folks' days. And I know that a social distancing thing has made it hard for people to, um, feel connected. Doing simple things like that just makes the, you know, it makes the community feel better. It makes everybody feel better. And I'm glad to hear the officers are also feeling better and the ones who are still not a hundred percent. I hope they, I hope they recover quickly and it's not too bad for them.
Nah, they're getting there. Thanks, Ms. Payne. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief. We appreciate it.
Okay, Mr. Kizak. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is, uh, public comment on non-agenda items. And I'm just going to wait a couple of minutes, um, to give people an opportunity if they want to, to, uh, comment on non-agenda, non-agenda items. And they can do that by phone number, uh, which I've read several times, um, also by email, text message, and all the other ways I listed at the beginning of the meeting. So we're just going to wait a couple of minutes.
I just want to thank them specifically for all they're doing out there because it really means a lot. It's keeping our country going and it's keeping our communities going. And it's helping us out a lot. So thank you to all them workers.
Thank you, Mr. Tosti. I'm Ms. Strauss.
Thank you, Mr. Kizak. And I want to thank Mr. Tosti for his comments on all of those groups of workers that are out there, uh, doing their best for us and trying to get us through this, uh, pandemic. I wanted to, uh, actually, uh, talk about another group of individuals who, um, are sometimes unsung, which is our teachers. I know many of us are the parents of Nishamani, uh, elementary, middle, and high school students. And this was our first day of online learning. And I know from my part, um, I think teachers should be paid bazillions of dollars a year after having gone through, uh, what we went through today, trying to get our kids to sit and focus and absorb the material. There was an incredible amount of thought and care put into, uh, the material that at least my kids were served on, uh, on canvas from Nishamani. And I know the teachers have been working incredibly hard through their spring break last week and the last couple of weeks that we've been out to get that material ready for our kids. So I just want to say how much we appreciate you. And I know this is not what you signed up for. It's not what we signed up for. But we're all in this together and thank you for doing such a good job for our kids.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Uh, Ms. Payne?
Uh, thank you, Chairman. I just want to, um, obviously echo what, um, my colleagues, Tom and Amy said. But I also want to thank the residents. I know this is not easy. Um, the social distancing or physical distancing basically now. Being apart from your friends and your family is not easy. But I just want to say that you guys are doing a great job. Um, I've been seeing a lot of things on social media where folks are trying to find, uh, creative ways to interact with each other. Uh, there was a recently like a car show that went through Levittown and it had an over like a hundred old antique cars and everyone got, came outside and sat on their lawns, um, and just enjoyed the car show. I, like I've said before, like this is something I've, um, been doing for a long time, my whole life. So, uh, to watch other people, um, feel the way I have before, it's not easy for me either. Uh, but I just want you to know that, um, it's only hopefully a couple more weeks. Um, and we'll be able to, you know, be in face to face again. Um, and I've been personally taking it one day at a time. I know when we think about months, it can be very overwhelming. So just try and take it one day at a time and soon enough we'll all be able to be, um, back together, um, and hanging out or celebrating holidays or birthdays. Birthday parades are great. Um, the kids come outside and neighbors drive around. It's a really great way to remind everybody that we are in this together. And we're a supportive and compassionate community and we're going to be okay. So I just wanted to echo that. Thank you for finding creative ways to cheer people up.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. Ms. Corporal?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo what everybody has already said. Um, I, I can't believe the, how everybody's coming together. The grocery store workers who we might have never thought of them being essential workers before, um, just comes to show you how really important they are. The teachers, Amy had mentioned, I think a lot of the times the teachers get the bad rap that they're not doing anything. And they have been working really, really hard to get these lessons together. Um, I see it today when my kids started, you know, just the thought that went into their lesson planning. And I think it's great. But also I just want to, I'm just really proud of the whole community, how everybody is listening to, um, the experts using social distancing, thinking of creative ways to come together and help people, even the restaurants that are helping out, our healthcare workers who are so important right now. I think it's just a fantastic thing to show so much support and love in our community and, uh, happy to be a part of it.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. Ms. Deolly Coles?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make sure that the residents in the community, uh, know that although the township building front door is locked, the workers, um, those, those of us that work for you are working all day. We are responding to calls. We are responding to emails. We have folks, um, deployed all over the community. Our IT department has allowed for finance to function seamlessly. We have folks coming in and out of the building. Um, so, so please reach out to us if you need anything. Um, Jim McGuire and Joe Barterella really focused on what the first responders are doing. But I just really want to say thank you to the township employees who really are all working as one department right now. Sitting in on the daily meetings with the police department, poor fire companies, the rescue squad, public works, emergency management, everyone really coming together. Um, it's really a, a sight to behold and I'm really proud to work with all of these people. And, um, and again, please make sure you reach out to us on our website. All of our emails are there and we will get back to you right away. And.
Thank you, Ms. Deolly Coles. Mr. Esposito?
Just wanted to echo the same sentiments as everyone else. Uh, thank all the workers out there on the front line and, uh, remind everybody to stay safe and stay home.
Thank you. Mr. Kessler?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I did want to say that, uh, other than my two kids run around the next room here, uh, this meeting did have a hint of something familiar and normal. And, uh, I wanted to thank the board and all the staff really for having this, uh, go on pretty seamlessly tonight. Um, it actually, uh, felt good to have something like this, uh, you know, in a time, uh, where everyone's, uh, separated remotely. Uh, I also wanted to mention that just that I've been working closely with Mr. Pat Ennis and his department. Um, anything on the engineering side for needs, uh, some of those things don't take, uh, breaks whether it comes to, uh, you know, issues with, with stormwater and and just engineering type of tasks, uh, residents or anybody has any concerns. Know that we're still working and the engineering department, uh, is still available for any questions you might have. So other than that, I just want to wish everyone, uh, good health and stay safe and hope to see everybody again soon.
Thank you, Mr. Kessler. Uh, I'll certainly join in the sentiments of all of my colleagues, everything that's been expressed here tonight. Um, and I'll, I'll just close the meeting by saying to the residents of this community, we know you're being asked to do something incredibly hard. But you're doing it and we're proud of you and it's working. And we're going to get through this. So just keep it up. We're all in this together. And these, these efforts that we're all being asked to undertake are working. So thank you, um, on behalf of the township. And with that, I will, oh, Mr. Tosti has one more comment. Yes?
You know, I did forget something. I, I apologize for, for going out of order here. But, um, one of the things that we should maybe look at, or at least encourage the school district to look at is this will be the first time ever that a senior class will not be able to graduate. And it's a possibility that they might not, never walk down the aisle. I've never seen that in my lifetime. I imagine nobody else has seen any of that in their lifetime. So, I mean, if maybe we can work with the, with the school district if they'd want to, if they want to work with us, maybe we can do something for these kids when this is all over, just to make sure that they have some kind of ceremony or at least be recognized because, I mean, to go through high school, to do the twelve years of school and then not have that chance to walk down the aisle or at least celebrate with your fellow classmates. and then not have that chance to walk down the aisle or at least celebrate with your fellow classmates, um, really is disheartening. And it's just something that maybe we ought to think about in the future and I apologize again for going out of order, but I did mean to say that, so, um, thanks, Mike. Thanks, Mr. Kezak.
Yeah, no, no apologies necessary. That's a, that's a great idea. Um, certainly something that I think we as a board should look into down the road. Um, and, and talk to the school district. Yes, Ms. Corporal.
I just wanted to say to Tom, thank you for thinking about them. As a mom of a senior, that's extremely important to me and, um, definitely something I've been thinking about.
Okay, if there's nothing else then I will accept the motion to adjourn. Mr. Tosti made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Take care.